One.
I'm only your.
I can't. I was starting with flag meetings.
This is the plan.
United States of America. To the public. Since. We should. I got invisible. The pretty justice.
Our folks, we have two public hearings tonight. Probably the. Opening of a dwelling hearing for November fifth special town meeting. Joe.
Mr. Chairman, there is a special town meeting to take place on November fifth. A warrant. It's in your packets and there's one on the table there for the folks in public. There are. A couple of items here. Uh, one is a vendor's license ordinance. Uh, update and then there's a. A update amendment rather to chapter thirty eight. Uh, for alternative energy. Uh, vendor's license ordinance has a couple of. A handful of changes, a new purpose section, an expanded definition section, new language regarding exemptions, performance standards, and occasional sales. Um, as I do, we do have the, I believe we have the deputy phone enforcement officer and the superintendent for questions about. Uh, the alternative energy ordinance that was discussed in the joint public hearing a couple of weeks ago. Playing the role. So if there are questions about that, they suggest it be directed to the deputy CEO or the chair. When the board would would prefer a very brief high level overview, I'm sure that he would be willing to provide that. Do the air.
This is deputy CEO here.
He is in the. Uh, zoom.
Well, let's, does the board have anything to say about the? File. Yes. Um, yeah, we might as well get, let him give us all an overview if he's here. Members of the public that have heard. There, Carl.
Yep, can you hear me?
Yeah. Yeah, would you, would you mind giving the, uh, the room a little overview of what's, what's going on with the ordinance?
Sure. So, right, this is a proposed alternative energy ordinance which, uh, proposes to put some. Guidelines and rules on, um. Solar and alternative energy installations in the town of Rangeley. Um, it breaks into a couple of different types of systems, which is a residential system. A commercial system which is tied to a commercial building. And then a third type of system is one that is standalone and the primary function of that system is to generate energy. Um, back into the electric company's grid, not offset any load on the site, so. This proposed ordinance, um, will be under chapter, part of chapter thirty eight. Um, there's a couple of use tables which, um, spells out uses allowed in the different existing zoning districts. Um. Also sets forth some setbacks that would be required for any type of ground mounted system, wind or solar. Um, and that's really a very high level overview of what the ordinance looks to put some guidelines to.
Great, thanks, Paul. Anybody in the public have any questions?
For this public hearing at five hundred three P M. Uh, next up, let's open the public hearing for the in town snowmobiles. Five hundred three P M.
Joe. Yes, Mr. Chairman, so, uh, I have. Uh, requested from the board or suggested to the board to call this hearing tonight to. Uh, take some public comment on the existing. Uh, snowmobile in town access routes, you know, some of these. Uh, in the room, the board has this and there's snowmobiles on the table, I believe. Want to look at what exists currently, uh, downtown Rangeley. Um, this has existed in Rangeley, I think, since the late nineties-ish. Um, there are some streets on here that I don't think are relevant anymore. Uh, and the reason that I want to bring it up, uh, is to be sure that our police force has. Uh, a clear understanding of what to. Uh, enforce as they move into the next winter season. Uh, so the board selection has authority. Uh, under twelve M R S thirteen oh six A to designate certain local streets. Uh, or the extreme right portion of certain local streets as in town snowmobile access routes. So I think it's important that the public have an opportunity to say. You know, if these are relevant, are there other, uh, streets that are not on the list and it should be, or some of these should be removed. Uh, so, you know, to that end, it's kind of time to talk about. Those. Those streets are on the list. I had met with the chief, parks director earlier and. I have some commentary on some of these if I could offer that. Um, for instance, Depot Street, right, so I'll go in the right corner of this. Depot Street is listed as a street that is an access route. But it doesn't really go anywhere. Um, so it's kind of misleading that you can use it as an access route. It goes to Main Street, but you can't really use Main Street in that part of town, so. Um, I, I think maybe we might consider. Striking it as an access route, but relabeling it as, you know. Municipal parking that's available for snowmobiles, because at the time of, at the time of this creation, the town had known this, we do now. Uh, Depot Street, that belongs to the. We use it for A T B as pants, no little parking. That's one item I like at. Um. Lake House Road is a private road. I don't know what that was called in terms of, I don't know that the town ought to be involved in the town, uh, I think that came up the last. And then talking with chief and then that earlier, uh, both Lake Street and Park Street. Are kind of questionable, uh, whether they, whether we think they should be open. Because now we, practice has been. Having sleds come into, uh. Where the fire chief accesses boat in the park and on the shrubbery there. Um, they just come into the park and then we give the streets at all over now, so that would be kind of internal. Uh, commentary on. Uh, Mr. Chairman, we've talked about. Uh, one other item that I would add, uh, for everybody is that I put a call into me and D O T regarding. Uh, the section of Main Street that's off this sheet from town Lake to give me an arrow. Uh, the way I interpret the statute is that. Uh, the D O T would have to give authority for that to be used as, uh, as an, as an access route. I want to give clarification. I won't have that for tonight. That's input from internal, uh, operations. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Um, so since I was a teenager when they started this and I used it as soon as it was available. Um, I think, I think having these routes are beneficial. Um, the two streets you talked about to eliminate. You really have a choice, um, as far as the park. It doesn't. Lead anywhere but into the park, um, you can't go anywhere once you hit Bean Street. So, yeah, I'd incline, we think those, I guess, the rest of the streets. I've never seen an issue where I live on, on one of these streets. So I see sleds go by all the time. Um, the only thing I would wonder is if. As long as you weren't accessing Main Street. Why Center and Cross Street wouldn't be connected to the Allen and Cross Street route? Then as long as you're not exiting on the Bean Street, then. They, they get still access to the other side of town?
Those are the on Cross Street. Goes across Cross Street to the end and then you go to the back of the D P W, I believe.
Well, on this map, John and Sean, that Cross Street between Center and Allen is not a route, which saying that Center itself is not a route.
Yeah.
But that's just my thoughts.
I think it has. I think it has been or used as.
Used as, but it's never been signed in. But. That, that's my question. What do you think, Sam?
Um, as far as the park goes, um, well, they actually come in through the lake there, correct? And so the parking, you know, they, I mean, I've seen them park to go to Parkside or to other restaurants, and so I.
It's been fenced off along the thing, so everyone comes off the lake and parks in that field behind the, so, in.
So that's, I mean, I think.
I think that was the best way to hang it, kept everybody out of.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I think that that's still. Good that, I see why it's just dotted that way for just, I guess, to kind of park and get in, get from in town places. Um. Is that the same, is there, is there an access on Lake Street?
So Lake Street, Mr. Chairman, Lake Street, years ago, uh, a lot of folks will remember that that. The pavement went almost, I don't say it went almost to the lake, but it was close.
Yeah.
Before it was discontinued and. Reverted to green space. So it wasn't a stretch for that, so for snowmobiles to access the lake there. Now kind of sidewalk and then, you know, green space and, and, uh. Half of it's been given back to the, the bottom there, so. Um, probably doesn't make standard sense for that to be, uh, an access anymore over through the park.
So you have to just kind of direct them towards the park.
I think I, I would recommend to, what to, to eliminate Lake Street as an access.
Right.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, I think, because there's. There's no access from Bean Street and there's really nothing to do over there. I guess unless you ride a chair on the sled, but you could walk ahead.
And then Depot, they, they can get to, you know, come through there, right? Is that, is that why they hold an access, maybe?
Depot Street never really been allowed to be ridden on.
It's way back, it was, yes, it wasn't, I'm like, this shows Depot Street continuing when in fact Depot Street is only like the first stretch of this road, the rest of it's private.
Right.
So, and those sled trails there anyways.
And it can't access until they get all any longer for, under the back of the.
Or from the, from the park.
Cross the trail, that's a problem, I mean, that's it really.
Anybody else?
No, I guess the only other. Big access point is up Chick Hill Road, I know it's not. Marked as access. I know a lot of people on Blue Lake Road use Chick Hill. And then I know last year there was some. Some stuff about it. Um. They said people couldn't use it, but then they were back to let them use it, so.
So you, you're saying people were using Chick Hill Road to tell them to access the sled trail that's farther down?
Yeah, there's a lot of people that. Hemorrhoids are there. And they, they come on Blue Lake Road and they go to Chick Hill, whether it's accessible and that's the way it's supposed to be.
Sure.
That's. A lot of it goes on, so. I guess if we're addressing it, we should address it, whether it's allowed or it's not.
So if, if we do talk about that, like, I mean, yeah, it would be up here. Since he's in charge of the facility up there, see what his thoughts are.
And I think if we regulate it, we need a, we made a marked trail down that side of Chick Hill to try to, I mean. We get it all the time, they're riding all over the airport and. If there was trails there or not, we're still going to do it, but if we dictate a trail down the side of Chick Hill, maybe we can eliminate that. Kind of happening, you know?
Post it properly within the, on the trail.
Right.
Prohibited, so that would be.
Because there is a lot of people that do access there, there we go.
Joe, that would be a separate. That wouldn't, I mean, it kind of fits into this, but once we give the access route discussion, it would be into the town, I would, the trail. A marked trail to be.
I think it would fit into this.
You think so?
Yeah, I do think so. Yeah.
You have to lock the phone, you have the license, right, basically.
Uh, that's, that's a little bit different, yeah, this is, because that is a public way, so Chick Hill Road is, is a. French, well, it's Frenchy's way now, with the style, that is a public way. Um, so this statute that we're talking about now allows you. Um, to. Um, designate certain public ways for our right portion of the business. Snowmobile routes. It does have a caveat in there that. Can now get to places of business. It's not helpful, which ultimately it would, I think, um, so. Now, later on in the meeting, we'll talk about. So there's. I'll get a problem for that. Those are two different, different answers.
Yeah, I heard from, uh, several people, guys, winner, about, uh. That live down in Gile Road and, uh. The Gile Road, uh. And, uh, pressure ridge group, and they. The last twenty years, so I guess they've been able to come out. Ride up the right side of the Blue Lake Road and then cross over. Uh, I read my stars, the ones where that piece of ground, bring that straight across. But they said, told me they rode, I don't ride, so. Of marching between Chick Hill Road and the airport down this flat side. There to tie into the main trail there and then, uh. I guess. Someone purple sign last year saying they couldn't do that anymore. And, uh, they, I started getting a hold of it, they could all start cutting across my land and stuff, but, you know. I wasn't very great. But so I think there's high demand for, for that, and I went up and looked at it, two different people, and. It didn't look problematic to me, you know, as long as they didn't ride up the. Folks that rode up the side, I could see tracks on the side of the runway where it came down, but that. Hot spot between Chick Hill and the base of a runway slope. That seemed like reasonable answers, maybe.
Well, I think it was more. Last year because. A lot of people at the low selection access the trail from that road, which they can't use that access anymore, so. More people were traveling up Blue Lake Road further to get to Chick Hill. So I think that was some of the. Some of the extra traffic and confusion. How far?
Chief, what's the, um?
It, is the rule five hundred feet from trailhead to trailhead on public way, is that universal? The state?
Problem is the trailhead is.
Yeah. Right, but if, if you're discussing, it ends up being a marked trail, then, then you're. With your limit five hundred feet or whatever, it's a new trail, if it comes to that, I'm suggesting.
Correct.
Just really quick, you did, uh, Joe, I'm not sure if you recall any of this, that there was some concern. Because of the close proximity to the airport, there may be some F A A regulations that they had. And we talked about this before. We've talked about getting a snowmobile trail relative to close to the airport, and I thought we got some kickback from the F A A. We just wanted to throw that out as a. It's something that's kind of running through my head.
I think as long as folks are not leaving the limits of the town away, the road. There's, there's no issue. What, the F A A does not want snowmobiles on the airport road. At all. So. Once they get out there, it becomes a, a problem. And you don't have to be far up there, you know, an issue they go to say. Leave tracks, so it's easy to see if someone's been wherever it's supposed to be.
I think a lot of it, we could eliminate it, if, if it did become an access point, yeah, we could, we could. Fess that off.
So face them, yeah.
Keep them. They're like, they're going there, we're going to avoid the problem ahead of time. You know?
Definitely, well, I'm going to ask Jimmy if he has anything to say, because I kind of forgot him, I think he's not sitting next to me, I apologize for that.
No, I think you guys have hit on everything so far, I, I don't have anything to add at this time.
Okay.
All right, uh, oh, what's the status of the village of?
Uh, you'd have to ask Joe, because it's not a piece of paper.
So, well, with this last one that they handed out, you know, like. Reference, last, maybe, that's what it looks like. Every minute since Steve over came over and eliminated. Snowmobbing trail, move a bit, but that, uh, there could be. Access for the people that. Live on that road, but I don't know where they, where they go.
So. To my knowledge, Mr. Chairman, there, there's no approved in town access routes in, in Acwassin. Uh, and I, I think it's, it might be a good idea to touch on that, but if, if the chair is in mind, I'd like to. You know, make sure I got all of the information on Rangeley. Downtown Range, things that you do explore and follow up on for you for your next meeting. So it sounds like. Uh, Frenchy's Way from Blue Lake to where the trail is in my. By the shock turn and the other goes somewhere. Yeah. Like you check up to the pale and just focus on that. Um, was there interest in Gile Road or any of those other roads possibly?
Well, I mean, I guess if people are going to be, if people are going to be accessing that, they're going to be coming from Gile Road, Hemetquin or Pressure Ridge. And I think once you get past that, you're a little bit too far. Even Village Road is. Quite a way down, I think it's closer to get to the other end and back up Blue Lake Road from the village, but. I guess you'd have to set the parameters in what, what it could actually be.
I mean, it, those, I mean, we're letting people have access downtown where it's busy and there's stops on, so. I think if we're going to. Entain putting something down Chick Hill Road, then we would have to. Make these dirt roads, access roads, routes, and then people would be subject to the same rules that anybody else is about reckless driving and such and such. Sam? Okay.
Yes, sir.
You think Jim?
Sounds good.
Okay. So I think I got what I need for Rangeley, you know, if you want to. Explore, should we explore Acwassin and, and conversations out there, what I have, or, Mr. Chair, is that Rangeley Avenue in Acwassin is. Is probably the busiest, busiest snowmobile. Place out there, that we've got the most traffic, we're crossing it, that street. Again, to clarify, no, to my knowledge, no approved downtown, in town, snowmobile route there.
I mean, I don't actually see why we could have considered it, at least where we're doing, the in town range, it's another building, it's out of range. This piece of bigger with the, that's, with the routes crossed out here, is that opposed to all? Or?
Uh, that's, that's. Probably also from the late nineties.
Yeah.
Nineteen ninety seven.
I think the club may have, I mean, they may have some input, I don't know if they do.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I don't know. How many people are accessing the trails from, from those roads, you know, I, I don't know that, I know. Pretty much the only thing that's used is from behind Mike's place down and then cross seventeen and everyone goes to the lake and. I imagine there are some people that go up, cross the canyon and, and stuff like that, but. I, I say, I guess if we're going to set the parameters, we should just either say it's a, it's allowed or it's not, just for. No confusion, you know, if they want to allow access on those roads, at least to clear everybody and. You know, if it's two or three streets up, unfortunately, that may not fall under the range, it's like.
Well, do you, you do as re- representative of the snowmobile club, you think that this, I don't think it's, you didn't.
I would say so, I think there's a lot of paint along those roads, the snowmobiles down there. I can't say it because I don't feel good down there and look, but I would imagine, I, I know a few people at Snowmobile that have houses there at rent.
Where is the Acwassin parking right located?
It's, uh, it's at the end of. Um, is that Acwassin, huh?
Oxford Street. Oxford Street.
So, yeah.
So that'll be the one thing to look into is if they have.
But they, the trail is right there.
Trail runs right in.
Trail, no, don't have to come down and look, it's literally on the trail.
Okay.
A stretcher road from.
And that's well marked, so they know that they're not riding into the, to get you or.
So, I was going to call on you before you even put your hand up.
You haven't, you haven't delivered that.
Yeah, so that's my concern, because I know the farmer's daughter is always allowed. That will be a problem, yeah, I don't think that's anyone that's going to be in place. So, this is going to be open. My concern is I'll go on Franklin Street. I'll find with my neighbors and, and all that, find access to trail that I think we should be able to. But I'm just concerned that an access trail, uh, might become detrial. And, uh, the streets in Acwassin are pretty narrow. And, uh, especially, you know, with the snowbanks and the maritime. It would be, it would be, it would be a, an option. Both streets become trails. I don't know what they have in mind, have you guys looked at that? No, I don't know what's, I, I just. Really read that they were going to be opening this, so, you know. Then, I guess we could try to stay on that side of the road and cross. Cross where the, uh. The fishing, the, whatever the, uh. That building on the corner.
Remember that?
No, the, like, museum.
Oh, museum.
Like, if you cross further up there or something, or. Or we just dictate that side of the trail along the farmer's daughter, I guess we'd have to look at.
But that was talked about, a reroute, obviously, which is something separate.
Right, I guess we're going to have to find other farmers' daughters, kind of, it's probably not going to be able to, because we went straight.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, if not, we'll probably have to do something, I guess we can look into it this week and come back.
Yeah, then, that might be the best thing to do.
This is what we might have to do for a regrow. If not, I mean, we'll shut that section down, I mean, everywhere goes from. Acwassin to the lake.
Yeah, no, we'd have to come up with a sign, but, but, yeah, if, if that watch goes down and look at the village.
Yeah.
Look at this other item that just came up and. And come up with smart views. Then we could have something to talk about, because we get all the city or, that used to.
Yeah, no, we haven't done it.
Anything else? Jimmy?
It sounds good, so we're going to revisit this in our next meeting then, have another public hearing with the Acwassin end of it, basically, you're saying?
Sounds that way, good, you ready? Weeks?
Yeah, that's when, in two weeks. It winters, uh.
November four, October, yeah, November fourth.
Okay, November, yeah. All right. Anything else from the public? All right, close this public hearing at five twenty five. Um, I'll take the interest in story, if anybody has any conflict of interest, anybody who disposes about any item on this agenda tonight, please, so, that's any time during the meeting. But, um, next up, I'm going to have to ask you to leave the room momentarily, uh, because the chair, I just gave, returning lanes or the five minute warning, so we.
Okay. Well. Yankees are in the World Series, I guess.
Go on, proceed with your agenda.
You want to jump ahead to that, Joe? Since we have that one in the room.
All right, well, jump ahead to number seven.
Okay, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, guys. Uh, the intent items will jump down to the liquor license. You have charges.
I have an motion to approve the license, liquor license, designer, cover and rub.
Second. And second. All in favor? Jimmy? You have to speak it.
I'm there, aye, aye, captain.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Thanks, guys.
Well.
I have a motion to approve the license at the corner mark.
Second. Discussion. All those in favor?
I'm in favor.
Go back to the housekeeping, uh, any public can speak, but I'm not at the end of it. Of course, committees, we have some minutes, uh, we've got a manager from the I seventeen meeting from the ordinance committee. September eighteen meeting on the C R C. And September twenty fifth, nine four meeting. Now, we have our minutes, October seventh. I'm going to turn it off. Well, second. You stepping? All those in favor?
I'm in favor.
You're going too fast, but you're turning. We're fine. All right.
Matt Johnson, one, or, that's.
Mr. Chairman, Matt Johnson, both will not be present tonight, uh, he's, he's asked to be at a free hearing.
All right.
We already approved your liquor license, just so you know.
Did you?
Let me give you my license.
You know?
Do I not take anything?
What, Ben?
No, I'm sorry.
So you go. All right, uh, well, Joe, number seven, the Range Lakes Snowmobile Club, they have a form of permission.
You guys, Mr. Chairman, talk about this, this is something that Snowmobile Club send out periodically, uh, just to make sure that they have. Permission on file with all. permission on file with all their, you know, we happen to be the little vanos that, uh, their trail crosses, and then over town, or man over there. That their trail, uh, goes across. So, as a matter of housekeeping, they send these out every now and again, make sure that their files are up to date and current. So, this pertains to our trail that, uh, sewer treatment plant, uh, this is the one that you referenced, that they would be, uh, accessing by the proposed, uh, connection with the proposed, uh, in town route down Frances Way. This is a trail that's existed for ages, very long time, that goes through the, um, irrigation facility. So, they're just doing some housekeeping there, I'm just looking for authority to sign it, on behalf of town. That's the reason that's in there.
Just need a motion, right?
Make motion to office town manager to sign the Ranjly Lake Snowmobile Club landowner permission.
Second. All right, same. Staines, um, any further discussion? All those in favor?
In favor?
These are the ones that should. Full business. Um, police response to fire call, I believe that was a question asked, maybe?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd invite you to, you came to come in and, uh, address that for us, and, uh, discuss it, uh, and we can see explain it to me, but I'd like him to elaborate for the board, so that, um, no. Just remind that, huh?
So, the specific call was, it was a fire alarm that went off. Believe. So, I don't have the form, I'm sorry, um, and, uh, as fire department said, group, a burglar alarm came from the same residence, and, uh, fire department was not gonna go to the crime progress, if that's what it was, they pulled over, requesting line enforcement. Dispatch then called my officer that was on duty, who basically checked, probably be sure that it was clear, and then had fire department come in.
And we, uh, the Ranjly Police Department does that sometimes, we're.
It's eventually with another department, correct? It's happened, responded for aid in Dallas Foundation, a couple times, and Mission Foundation, so, um, I think it's, now that they're working, that it's gonna happen more often.
And then the board?
It sounds, uh, it sounds like sense, he said it has happened in the past?
Yeah.
Yep, so, yeah, that, that makes sense to me.
It's the same as the chair's, sorry, it's the same as the chair's department, following up and assisting.
Sure, and I'm aware of it, I just wanna make sure the public can hear it from your own voice, uh.
Yeah, and just really quick, Richard, I'm so sorry, um, I'm going to ask the question, because it was actually the fire chief who requested that our police department respond to that call, heard the call, only you. So, just to clarify that, um, and then, you know, then it's, we're being such a gray area, because there are only certain reasons we're allowed to go outside of our jurisdiction, and it opens us up to liability, we're not covered by the Tor- the main torts act, if we're outside of our jurisdiction, for our police department.
So, if, if we're requesting, we are, are covered by mutual aid, right?
If you're requested by, um.
So, I like to, I request my guys to be requested from dispatch.
Yeah.
Dispatch is the one that requested us.
Okay.
So, if the fire, fire went through dispatch, dispatch requested us, so ultimately, they should be requesting a deputy. If a deputy's not in the area, the head deputy should be the one that says, see you very soon, so.
Okay, so we did, it wasn't, it first person, we do not have an interver ficial agreement with them. Um, and then it didn't seem to meet any of the specific authorizations, it was just why I was, because it opens us up to liability, when we're being treated falls outside of our jurisdiction. And Ranjly Police Department's jurisdiction is the town branch. And just wanna be sure we're not opening ourselves up to liability, it's fantastic, we have a full-time police department, and I am so happy that it's there, it's, I just wanna be clear, we're not doing anything. And we're not being reimbursed for this, so.
Thank you, well done, uh, Jake, and then Mark.
What was the timeframe for coming to be available?
No, I don't know.
Okay.
Mark, you're gonna deal with Cindy first, I'll go, okay, Cindy?
I, um, I wanna call, I had specifically brought this up at a prior meeting, when, um, Chief Cate wrote a letter, you know, just kind of, um, discussing your philosophy, and I raised concern about the section where you had indicated that you were going to be cross-training, perhaps, and, um, which in essence, would take you out of your jurisdiction, and Joe assured, and you assured us that wouldn't happen, and, and it has. I think if, and this wasn't a regular occurrence, that I recall, I was on the fourth Sunday for nine years, um, I don't recall it being a regular occurrence, under our previous police chiefs, we had bi-monthlies, um, sometimes monthly, sometimes two reports a month, from the police chief, as far as where the calls were. Um, I think that if the town of Ranjly wants a mutual agreement with the plantations, then we should've gone with county. And we had a proposal from county presented at the last budget cycle, that never was brought to the Board of Sovereign's agenda. And it's, and I'm gonna revisit this every time, you know, this happens, and hopefully, it won't happen, um, again, but if we want, if we want seamless service, if we do, if we want to avoid liability, because we are being taken out of our jurisdiction, then we should, we should seriously look at county coverage as opposed to our, our own PD, I'm just putting it up there. But I don't recall having to have this discussion in pre, in prior years. Um, I'm also gonna segue, because it is, uh, we're on the police department, um, subject, and it is an agenda item, but I can't speak on the agenda item, cuz it's executive session. Um, but Joe, you made a comment at the last meeting, it's a passing comment regarding needing an executive session to discuss the police schedule and a budget item, I think, within the department that you were afraid was going to exceed the police department current budget. Um, I have a, I have a huge concern reopening the union negotiations, I've been a part of union negotiations for three previous cycles. This union negotiation was just signed in late July. Chief Cate, you were on board as the interim police chief, and into the negotiation period, while this was all being discussed, so why is it being opened? It sets a dangerous precedent. And and to bypass for something to be, for, for something to be renegotiated, and I'm just really stretching it here, because I don't, it's not my business, you know, what's on, what you discuss in executive session. Uh, but if you take action, coming out of executive session, to reopen union negotiations, or to increase a, a budget line, well, then what's the point of the budget process, what's the point of union negotiations? That's all I'm saying.
Jimmy?
I just wanna go back to that one comment Cindy made about the, the county patrol, and that didn't come up at budget, um. There was a proposal, majority of the people that all the board spoke with didn't wanna go with county, that's why we rebuilt our own police department. And in my mind, we shouldn't be talking about going backwards and trying to get county, but moving forward and becoming a Ranjly Region Police Department, and moving into the plantations, which is hopefully what we're gonna be doing at our next quarterly meeting, starting those discussions. It sounds like what has happened, this same issue has happened in the past, and it's not a regular occurrence, but if there's a burglar alarm, the fire department's gonna stand there and watch a house burn, because they can't go in if there's a burglar alarm going off. I, I don't understand why there's such an issue with that mutual aid, if we're covered under liability with the mutual aid, like the chief just said.
I, I agree, Jimmy, about that, okay, which is the topic we're actually. Mark?
I forgot, I think, uh, I don't know who, you know, the merger that each spoke with during the process, that nobody wanted to go with county. Majority of the people that I spoke with thought that county was a good idea, Jake wasn't on board yet, I don't know if you saw the proposal, or whether it was, or any of that stuff, and, uh, you know, uh, I was in favor of going with county, I didn't think it's bad enough, airtime, uh, with the public, and, uh, you know, and when they, they hired Chief Cate, you know, I congratulated, you know, I liked him, I told him, I said, you know, I prefer county, but if they were gonna hire a police chief, I'm glad of you. And, uh, but, uh, now, you know, this proposal, and what Ranjly had budgeted for in their police department, was a hundred and twenty hours a week, now it looks like this. Twenty-four, or you folks decided you wanna go twenty-four seven, which is an extra forty-eight hours a week, uh, and, uh, you know, so.
Can I just interrupt you one, one minute, like, I, I gave Cindy a bunch of time, and I don't wanna give you guys all the time, but this specific topic was one call that the chief, or his men, his servants went into a plantation, now we're discussing.
Well, yesterday.
Wait a minute, now we're discussing whether we should've went with the county or not, where, where you are, or, or budget items, and I, those are all important topics, but this topic is, I haven't wanted an explanation of why the chief and, and his officers went into Ranjly Plantation on a certain call, so I don't wanna get off.
Okay, I'll, 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 I'll.
I mean, we didn't talk about it, but this is what we're talking about.
Uh, late afternoon, I had to go around Route Seventeen and look at a job, and, uh, there was a accident on the Route Seventeen end of South Shore Drive, and the fire department had gone there, and when I had gone down Route Seventeen towards the job, Ranjly Police Group was across from the fire station, when I came back, he was at the scene on Route Seventeen, you know, in Ranjly Plantation. So, if we have twenty-four seven, we're always gonna have someone in there, it's all, we're, so, there's not gonna be a sheriff, it would be rare, when there's one any closer than the Ranjly Police, when we're surrounded by these plantations, so in fact, you know, rather, I won't delve into it, but it looks to me like we're gonna spend, you know, a couple million dollars of taxpaying money, more than we would have, over the next several years, by having Ranjly's own police department, instead of going with the county, I was needed at that.
Okay. Anybody on board, have anything on this topic?
Sir.
Somebody else?
What? But I, well, I'm just curious, so, is there any limit to how often Ranjly Police will respond to the plantations, if, 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 since, uh, Chief French resigned, we haven't gotten any monthly reports or anything, but, uh, I'd like to see the monthly report stuff, again, not a fully staffed, you know, which, I'd like to see the percentage of calls that are outside of the town of Ranjly, most of any of it. Yeah, just so we can keep track.
Yeah, we should, we should probably be doing that anyways, now you guys are all in room, get our, we're still used to it. Okay, we're quite. All right.
Mr. Chair, turn your legs, or, listen.
Okay. All right, folks, we're gonna deal with this executive session, you're welcome to come back when it's over. Give him a moment.
Oh, uh, I made a motion to, uh, go into executive session, RSA, uh, one, chapter fifteen, subchapter one, section whole five, sixteen, consultation.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
In favor?
Here we do. Thanks for hanging in there, seeing.
So, I'm on the executive session. Uh, with no action taken. Thank you, next, I don't remember number one already. Number eight, uh, the CRC final, a second reading. Add it up to anybody on the board?
I'm in a non-voting liaison, I'm, uh, excellent.
That's the only number that, that's, yeah, that's all I just changed, Mr. Chair, I did, uh, visit with the CRC at their last meeting, uh, they effectively did vote to support this concept, they had not seen the bylaws, but they did vote to support liaison, non-voting liaison, uh, at large, from one of the surrounding, uh, areas to, uh, represent the board at the, uh, CRC, so they also want to have, or recognize that there'll be a selectmen on the CRC, and also, this will, this person will not replace the CRC, not replace the selectmen.
Evelyn?
Just really quick, um, I would like to take a moment to clarify and expand on my position regarding the bylaws. Um, I did type in an email, I was, I was gonna be, so I'm just gonna read the email, but I am here. Um, it seems that my earlier comments might have been misinterpreted, and I appreciate the opportunity to provide further context. My aim was to engage in thoughtful discussion on the topic, to foster understanding and maintain positive relationships with our neighboring plantations. It was essential for me to convey that we should avoid getting the impression that representation on a town of Ranjly Committee is being imposed or dictated. Unfortunately, my input was seen as opposition to the support of a former member. As an active member of my community, I value anyone willing to commit their time and efforts to public service, I too value my belief that maintaining the integrity of public service requires us to uphold established rules and procedures. I have concerns that the proposed updates to the bylaws may be perceived as creating an exception to these standards. We all share the responsibility for this, for the decisions we make, I recognize that understanding the broader implication, implications can be complex, especially when one board's resignation impacts another committee's composition, it's natural to feel compelled to take action, but we must weigh our choices carefully. I respectfully ask the board, as well as all other committees, to proceed with thoughtful caution when proposing amendments to establish bylaws, rules, and procedures. As responsible stewards of collective representation in the town of Ranjly, decisions should not be influenced by the regret of an individual regarding exceptions in governments. I commend the board's initiative to seek legal counsel and consider the appointment of a liaison representing the board of selectmen. This reflects thoughtful deliberation, because I'm gonna kind of clarify whether this option is still on the table, as the proposed option does not appear to be in line with that. Nobody has to answer that, cuz it sounds like there is still intent to, from what I understand, the current suggestion is to introduce an additional random liaison role for the committee, but enable the individual whose position has been vacated to contribute in a different capacity, if they feel unable to do so effectively as a member of the public, is that correct? Sorry, but everything, you can have it, I just gotta email it. I was gonna email it, I'm like, no, I wanna make it, so.
Your, your last piece, can you, can you just do a synopsis on that?
I was just trying to understand, so, and then I initially committed, I thought it was a great idea to go to the attorney, it sounds like that was not an option. So, the intent is now to go with the, an additional position on this committee?
Point of clarification, so, there are two things that are on this agenda that I have not come back from Steve yet, this is one of them, and the second reading materials for the vehicle policy has not come back yet, so.
So, these are gonna be sec- second readings, and that's all they're gonna be?
They're probably.
Besides discussion?
You, you can discuss them, but you probably wait until the next meeting, no good way. Jim, you have anything on the second reading of the bylaws?
Uh, no, it sounds like we're gonna have some more discussion, and we're waiting to hear back from Steve, did you just say that, Joe?
I did.
Okay, yep.
Yep. Thank you for the input, Helen. Then we'll give him the turning lights from this.
Somebody can add it to the record.
Yep. All right, people, usage policies. Second reading of that document.
I do have updates. We feedbacked that at the last meeting. This is certainly the accent. Steve also offered back.
Jim, do you have anything on this before Steve looks at this?
I do not, no.
Peter said?
No, sir.
I've read through it, but I haven't been able to hear anything. We have the budget and actual reports in our folder.
This is a new format that Mark has put together and I can request a summary that shows budget to actual. I'm still getting used to the format. So, if you are to have questions, please let me know. I can answer some of the questions. This is designed to give you a quick snapshot of where we're at. This shows the percent of the budget that's remaining here in Rangerville. I'll break it down, just for revenue. Then you have expenditures. The one thing that this does, and shows the change in fund balance. So, once we get acquainted with this format, it should be helpful for the board and budget committee. But basically, shows the revenues at the top. And here, each category of your budget below there. You've got your general government. What was it? You have ninety-three percent of your budget left. So, we're, we're way into the year now. So, you typically would be about seventy-five percent remaining in the budget administration. We're about, right about there. So, you kind of use that column in the right hand side. That's how you as a high level of officials can kind of take a snapshot of where you're at with that budget. So, if you see something there that you want more detail on, let me know. I can bring it, any answers, bring back in the next meeting.
I think I kind of like this format too.
This is tailored for the local folks. Again, it does have that fund balance there. It's something that no other local folks have seen in the past.
Hey, we got a bid for the fuel this year. We have two bids. Looks like S K Fuel came in at two ninety for number two and three ninety for K one. Dead River came in at two seventy for number two and three twenty.
Make a motion to go on Dead River, number two, or the fuel bid.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
In favor.
There's correspondence on the case that I've been regarding as the CRC member calculation. You want to read this out loud, Hill, or just?
Uh, you could. Step up in the board. We should put it in the, read it in the record.
Well, I've read it. It's on the website.
All right. All right, just to follow up on my visit with the CRC last week, they did not only support the essentially content in the bylaws that we looked at a while ago, they did support the nomination of a plan to be the liaison.
Do we have anything written in the record?
None that I'm aware of.
Right calendar. Remember, that's election day. Polls open Monday, Monday, it looks correct. Me in this room. And once the absentee ballot deadline, sort of deadline committee has the handle.
Uh, there is. Well, let's try this. It's a couple of days before.
Marty said it would, you were going to turn them until eight o'clock that night on election day.
You can, you can take out a ballot.
Taking one out, if you're taking one out, you can, oh, sorry, Tracy, you can't do it.
Yep. You can do, you can, you can pull an absentee ballot until November 2nd without a special circumstance. And they are due back by eight P M. Election day.
Thank you, Tracy. I just figured that was worth saying. I have a base people listening to Hobbin', and they don't have to research it on Google.
Thanks, Tracy. Sorry.
Thank you.
You're welcome. No worries.
All right, then we're looking, we're still going to look to schedule a quarterly meeting with the plantations in January.
That's correct, Mr. Chair. I heard back from Dallas who had a preference on one. I'm waiting to hear from Sandy River. Sandy River knows about the preference and will carry that to the bottom of the last information.
And let's get Dallas there, too. I mean, Dallas, let's get, let's get Rangerly Plantation there, I mean.
I haven't heard back from them yet.
We need to go. Moving right along. Other business, the grant sheet is provided in your binder. Do we have any selectman communication? You guys understand? No, sir. Mr. Janassi?
All set, sir.
I don't have anything. So, it looks like we're doing another executive session. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much. Thank you. I make a motion to go into, go into executive session, R S A, Title I, Chapter 15, Chapter One, four, five, six, late negotiations.
Second. All those in favor?
In favor.
There we go. You can interpret this personally. All right, we're coming out of executive session at six forty-five P M. No action taken. I think the only thing left is number fifteen.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?
In favor. See you, guys. Thanks, man. Talk to you later.